All right, so I'll call us meeting to order at 6:34. Uh, Jordan, can you call our role, please? You got it. Jim, Crater?
Uh, here.
James Carman?
Right.
Gary Demaschik?
Here.
Isaiah Crow?
Here.
Mary Beth Schell?
Here.
All right, uh, do we have proof of posting? Would you like to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Um, one second.
Thank you, James and Isaiah. Any questions, changes? Gary Nanjum?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth? Yes. I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of February 12th, 2018?
Um, sorry?
Thanks, James and Isaiah. Any questions? Gary Nanjum?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth? Yes. I'll say yes as well. Do we have any public input?
Yes.
Need to act like.
Yeah.
All right. Natalie Yeo and your child regarding 4K early enrollment.
Hi, Sarah.
Yes.
Hi, Heidi. Um, we're here to just open discussion about and, um, talk to the board about their policy regarding early enrollment in 4K. Um, we know that is an option for 5K, however, um, according to board policy, uh, there's no current, uh, early enrollment in 4K. Little background, so our three-year-old misses the 4K deadline, she's September 3rd, which September 1st was cut off for, for 4K. So, I guess we're here just to kind of get some answers and, and see what your opinion is about this. Um, we're familiar with the process of early enrollment in 5K and wondering, um, why it isn't an option for 4K and knowing that, um, when 4K originally started, it wasn't an option and there was a couple kids that tried early enrolling and it's my understanding that there was just no way of evaluating these students, um, appropriately or, um, and looking at the early enrollment in 5K, the process makes sense, but then we also had the opportunity to attend the child development fair that was held, um, which, just going through, what a wonderful, what a wonderful event that was on track. It was just wonderful to see the community and schools there, but wondering if that couldn't be maybe a tool in evaluating an early enrollment into 4K as well as 5K. I think we've come a long way since we started 4K in the district, so, um, I guess we're just here to open that discussion and see what your views are on this and, um, as we've kind of done the research through D- through DPI, they've kind of studied the district-by-district policy decision, um, although the statute doesn't allude directly to 4K, but when I pose a question in DPI, sends me back to the kind of is, kind of sent you in a circle and ultimately says it's a board-by-board decision on, on whether or not to do this. I don't want to be the parent screaming like my kid's special for this, I'm just trying to understand if it's an option for 5K early enrollment, I would like it, I would like to see my kid have some, some of the things that they gain with 4K before she's going into 5K, I mean, it is our plan to early enroll her into 5K. Um, with the peer-to-peer interaction, the schedule, you know, getting used to a school environment, I just think it'd be so beneficial before we try to early enroll her into 5K. So, that's what we're here to talk about today. I know you guys are going to be discussing this later in the meeting, but kind of wanted to put in my two cents in the public input, so.
And I appreciate that, where it's very interesting to look at and kind of talk about. So, you are right, um, so during the public input, um, it is just our, our duty to listen to the information presented to us, so I, I do appreciate you coming and talking to us. Um, you are correct, we are going to be talking about it as a board, um, during our committee report, which will be, um, in just a little bit, if you guys want to not listen to our conversation, you're more than welcome to kind of say you're not listening to us, so.
Yeah, like I said, just opening that conversation and bringing it to the table is, is our goal tonight and kind of going from there and depending on what your, your opinion is of it and, yeah, so thanks for listening.
Thank you. All right, what went on then? Um, I, we're present, I'm just going to actually keep it really short, I don't have anything. Um, I know that there's so much going on to the, into the school, it's already February. Um, I was just involved in the solo ensemble this weekend, that went great, there's so many activities going on and that's all I'll say, because there's so much. So, thank you everybody for, and you guys for being here, we'll talk about you in a minute or so. So, do you want to?
Yeah, we'll jump right into that and Mr. Moy here, there you are.
Right. If you want to get us started, Rich, and kind of segue into our student presentation, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Thank you for letting us jump ahead and, um, just to kind of preface this, uh, we, we are also hosting the Capital Conference Girls Basketball Hall Conference meeting tonight with the conference commissioner handling the door, I have to run the south side, so I have to be in another spot at seven o'clock, so, um, with the amount of time we have, um, I will save some time. You did get something about middle school girls basketball from Coach Turkey, Coach Van Ryper. Um, the biggest thing that I just want to summarize there was, we only had seven eighth-grade girls play in order to provide a team at each level, instead of moving everybody up and making it to eighth grade, we took what we felt were the four who could handle playing eighth grade this year, or felt like they were best fit to play eighth grade, and created one eighth grade and one seventh grade. We played at B level, which was beneficial to our kids across the board. They were successful this year, we know the numbers, the eighth-grade girls going up next year may be a little low coming into high school, but the positive is, as we look down the pipeline, seventh grade right now has 14 girls playing, sixth grade has 12 or so playing, so our numbers are getting stronger, but, um, uh, Coach Van Ryper and Coach Turkey did a great job with that, uh, managing those two teams. Their last game is tonight, well, shouldn't have been last week, but because of scheduling conflicts, it's tonight in Baraboo, so hopefully, they should be done and almost home by now, but they had a great season and it was fun to watch this year. Uh, I'm going to segue into boys' basketball, they did, uh, they just had their practice, so I'm guessing they went home for the evening, but, um, just to equate somewhere in the boys' basketball, they finished second in conference, two to Blair's, who was, uh, one of the top ranked teams in the state, lost to them twice and they got beat by Waterloo once, so they ended up with three conference losses, which for Heights is, is pretty good season for boys' basketball, and they ended up with a number three seed in the, uh, regional tournament, which we hosted the CD meeting. Uh, number three gave us the first round bye, they'll play the winner of Cooley, Christian and Aquinas here Friday night, and we won't know about Saturday until the bidding finishes on Friday, there's that potential if we win and if then we're losers, we can be hosting Saturday night as well for, for regional championships, so, um, but right now, Friday night, seven o'clock, please come out and watch them, they're fun to watch and, uh, they're ready, they're poised to make a nice run into the, into the tournament. With that, that's what I have for you, I want to turn it over to all of these young men and women because, uh, my ask is always to just let you see these young men and women and just kind of let them, um, relate some of their season summaries to you, just kind of get a feel for who they are, and this year is especially different, we're having our co-op teams, uh, some of the participants come in and, uh, they've had great success this year and I just want to applaud them for that, but we're going to kind of go in this direction, we'll start with girls' basketball, we'll go to hockey, and then we'll finish up. Carson, you get to be last, is that good?
Yeah.
Best for last, so, for swimming, so, uh, without further ado, I'll turn it over to the young ladies sitting behind me, the Athler Girls, go ahead, ladies.
Okay, so we were nine and 15th for the whole season and had a 387 conference, so, yeah, it was okay, but we improved a lot, like, we had a injury, we lost one of our four, or yeah, one of the four seniors and she probably our best player, definitely was, yeah, well, she tore her ACL and she was definitely a attribute to be player or conference player of the year, so that was better, but we improved a lot and definitely did better than I thought overall. We got the seventh seed, so we played Anales for Luther Tuesday night, or that's Tuesday, and then lost to Darlington Friday, who was the second seed, and, so, yeah.
In, in to follow-up, there's summary, um, for those of you who watched the girls' basketball last year, with the loss of that senior and the girls who graduated, uh, with only a few returning starters, statistically, they lost 89% of their scoring from last year. So, to see the quality wins that they had, the improvement they had was pretty remarkable all by itself, so, um, turning it over to our boys' hockey players, so if you guys would introduce yourselves, please.
All right, I'm William Hanksen.
Hey, Sarah.
I'm Lori Yeo.
My name's Adam.
All right, so, we had probably one of our best seasons in like, uh, a lot of years, this year I think like, five or eight, I don't know, something like that, and we're pretty proud about that, and we finished 17, 4 and 2, which, that was a big part of it, and there's, obviously, there's three of us this year that played and we're actually getting more kids next year. I think two more. Two more kids, so that'll be more Heights kids coming up, that'll help us improve our own record and stuff like that, and then, uh, we finished, we got to the second round of playoffs, we lost to West Salem 4 to 0, and they were really good, and I think, can I just go on?
They're still in it, um, their top player is actually going to play for the Badgers next year, he's outstanding, they have 13 seniors on that team.
Yeah.
That they're graduating, the bulk of this team is made up with the sophomore group, and these guys are instrumental in that.
Yeah, three young people. And that's about it, and I would like to thank you for your support.
Yeah, someone to follow with them and, Mr. Trowel was right, I mean, we have these three going to play, and so two sophomores and a freshman next year, um, out of our five, I mean, these guys will be the oldest as juniors, so if you look at juniors, sophomores and freshmen, uh, so it's going to be fun to watch, and we did have a Rock the Ring night, we had our high school band go over and play, uh, hopefully they were loud, you guys could hear them that night, but, uh, Salk had a big band concert that night, so they said, "We really want to rock the ring with the band, would you bring the Heights band?", we did, they did an outstanding job, and, uh, Angelah Haas said, she never, has never watched hockey, but enjoyed it and want, she wants to go back and do it again, so it was a great experience, and they actually won that game in like the last 30 seconds, they got the game-winning goals, that was fun to watch, um, for all of them, so, congrats on your guys' season.
Thank you.
The best for last.
So, I'm Carson Flovo, and, so, this year, we had 25 swimmers on our roster, which is the biggest in the Salk's history, and our co-op with them started, uh, 18 years ago, and then we had like six people, but five people from Heights wanted to swim, so that's how like the co-op came together, and then, um, prior to last year, we had gone 27 years without a conference title, and then in these past two years, we've gone undefeated in conference dual meets, and this year we also swept the JV Conference and won every event, and then, we had, and with our co-op, we also have Lodi, which, uh, bumped us up to a Division One school, so, we have to swim against people like Madison West and like Madison Memorial, and at State this year, we had six guys qualify and we got that. That's it.
Yeah, great job, and if I understand right, and I didn't, I didn't clarify, I didn't ask for clarification, but swimming, we have the state's longest-running co-op.
Yes.
With Salk, so that is, uh, kind of a cool thing to be acknowledged for, I mean, it's a co-op that's been long, the longevity of it, and we have two swimmers now.
Yeah, uh, me and then Luke Howgan, and then next year, we're looking at two more from Heights, Matthew Lloyd and Anthony Lee, so hopefully.
Yep, so, hopefully we'll have two seniors and then two freshmen, so that, two, hopefully we can get more, kind of, if the guys enjoy it and, uh, they do a great job, so, again, I just want to applaud all of you for coming, thank you, but this is what it's all about, you know, I can come in and give you the report, but at the end of the day, to put names and faces with these teams, I think is awesome, they get a chance to come meet you guys and talk about what they've done, so.
Very cool.
From a district standpoint, we talk about this a lot, we provide opportunities and something positive for kids to get involved in, and I thank you guys for coming, you know, talking to a board and a community, probably not on the top of the teenagers' list of kids, so, I thank you guys for coming, and I just really do, I think from our district, that's one of those things to be talkable, like what makes us special, in a good way special, um, is the fact that we provide opportunities like this for kids in Heights that you can be on a hockey team, you can be on a swimming team, despite the fact that we're a smaller school, so I think that's a really cool thing and something we need to continue, uh, to talk about, because that is, that does make us unique in a good way, um, so I applaud you guys, applaud the parents, um, all parents with kids in sports, because that's like a nut house in itself, trying to get kids back and forth and between youth games and this and that and everything else, so thank the parents for the support, and then to, um, relative to the whole co-op piece, how about even a claim to understand the commitment that is from a parent's perspective to transport kids back and forth and all the things that come with that, so, definitely credit goes to the, the kids and the parents as well, and girls, I can't help but say it, um, you mentioned improvement, I came to a few games this year, early in the year, middle of the year, late in the year, um, my wife, um, came with me and she made the comment, she's like, "Well, they've really improved", so, I think from your standpoint, I know you lost a big part of your team and Kristen, but he kept working hard and you improved, and that's really what life's all about, so, you'll remember that, uh, that you guys did get a lot better and other people saw that too, so, proud of you.
And I'll just, real quick, to piggyback off Jordan, and you'll see a lot of these men and women, young men and women, out there in the spring as well, um, one thing we've been working on, and I'm working hard with, uh, Coach Bennett over at Salk, uh, these gentlemen here actually play lacrosse over at Salk, which is fun to watch, I got a chance to watch them last year, I remember watching them play, we're trying to coordinate a game over here, so our Heights fans can see our young men play lacrosse, so it's not a WIA sanctioned co-op that, uh, co-op with us, school to school, but they are very ingrained in that, and that lacrosse co-op has grown, we have a number of Heights guys, I mean, I would, I would guess five days at the minimum that we have playing lacrosse.
Then he's paid champs too.
Yes.
For one sort of.
Yeah, they do a great job, but I just want to, I want to put a plug in, because I know Carson will be out in the spring, running track, doing something, no, well, he used to, like, these ladies will be out there, but I just didn't want to, you know, not promote what they do as well, because they don't just take the season off, they're out playing lacrosse and keeping their skills sharp, and there's always something going on with them, so, um, again, thank you guys for coming, thank you for letting me go early, I just want to bug out for the meeting.
Yes.
We have a meeting as well, of lacrosse.
Yes, it is. Drink's first meeting.
So do we. Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thanks again, guys, have a good one.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you guys, thanks for coming, thanks, thank you.
So, Rich has left, but I was going to mention that I think we can do much better job with marketing our co-ops, because I just kind of took a gander at the website and, you know, we kind of just have a listing of the sports, but a lot of them are updated as far as the coaching and, you know, don't specify really, um, you know, the co-ops, um, I couldn't find them on the calendar, they're not in the newsletter, I don't know if anybody else noticed that, but, um, just recently, people were surprised to hear that we did the co-op, so I think we need to emphasize that, um, way more as far as, you know, the opportunities we're providing, but make it a lot easier for people to know where they can go to see this stuff, um, so you can follow up with Rich, Jordan, I know swimming and hockey are over now, but, um, even the lacrosse is an opportunity to, you know, see our kids in action, so I think we should.
We'll track them.
Make sure it's, well, yeah, but tracks on our calendar anyway, hockey and swimming need to be added.
Will do.
Thank you.
Chris, if you?
I can go first, if you want. Okay, well, and the first item on my agenda was the Child Development Fair, which was our second annual, so, I didn't actually plan to parent to say wonderful things, but I really appreciate that, thank you so much. Although, we did get a lot of parent feedback and I, you know, I didn't share that with you guys, but, um, we compiled all the parent feedback that we did get, and it was very, very positive, and that was just terrific, so, um, if you remember back to last Monday, it was kind of an icky day, it was really, 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 really hard, you know, and so, um, considering what the weather was like on that day, you know, I, I was really pleased that we still were able to screen 42 children, I'd say there was probably about 10 more that were signed up, that did not show up either because their children were sick, or, you know, I don't know, some of them might have been weather-related too, you know, or a mixture of the two things, but, um, yeah, so 42 children screened and were from ages two to five, um, I would say we were estimating about 25 families visited the two 4K classrooms, you know, as part of like 4K awareness orientation, and both 4K teachers were present to, um, they had some like stuff that was running on their smartboards, you know, just about 4K and some pictures and things like that, but also were there to answer questions and to show the room and talk about 4K. Um, nine community organizations participated, so either as, you know, vendors that were in the gym and, you know, just sharing, you know, things that were available to children in, you know, in our two communities, um, and like Officer Department was there for part of the day, and, you know, the Sheriff's Department was there, the fire, um, fighters were there, you know, talking about what they have and, you know, and that seemed to be very interesting, and the kids were really, you know, fascinated with some of that. Um, also the Lions Club, which participated both last year and this year, they were there the whole entire time to provide, um, vision screenings, so that was terrific. Um, Katie and Zoe provided hearing screed, screenings to children too, and we think about 25, um, families, you know, um, took heart in that hearing and the vision screening, but, um, I just felt like it was a, it was a really great success, 20 different staff members were involved, you know, and were able to work an alternate schedule, which was really kind of nice, you know, so they didn't participate in the other things that were going on for in-service on that particular day, instead they worked an alternate schedule, and that was all the special ed staff, plus, um, Aubrey, Katie, you know, myself, Julie, you know, so people services members and special education, you know, so it was a great night and I look forward, hoping that we'll continue that, you know, next year hopefully. Um, a couple other things I wanted to talk about, um, on January 22nd, which was actually the last time I was here, but we hadn't had a meeting yet when I did my, um, my ride-up, my update, so I just wanted to mention this, you know, that I had a really great two-hour meeting, um, with the school counselors, the health teachers and, um, Julie, the school psychologists, you know, and we're able to look at, um, it's not the DPI they created, the SOS DVDs, you know, but they have worked in conjunction with, um, the group that, and SOS stands for Science of Suicide, um, that is where they acknowledge, care tell, so if you've heard me or anyone else ever talk about ACT, the active approach, what it's all about is acknowledging that someone, you know, is having a difficulty, is having a struggle, you know, show that you care about them and then tell a trusted adult, you know, that's kind of the, the idea behind that, and that's also used for bullying prevention, it can be used just if you have any concerns about, um, other kids, and with, uh, with this SOS videos, the DVDs, it's, it's really good, his has vignettes, where kids, first of all, do something and they don't quite do it right, you know, they don't acknowledge it, like they brush it off, or they kind of put the kid down in some way or minimize it, you know, or they don't bother telling anyone that's an adult, and then they redo the whole segment again and then show it the right way, and then throughout the videos, there's also just a lot of talk, um, amongst kids and talk, um, with counselors and things like that, so, it's just a really great addition to any kind of mental health suicide prevention that, um, the teachers were already doing, and so after kind of viewing those together and talking about, um, both health teachers are really on board for including that, you know, in both seventh grade and ninth grade, and there's a different video for middle school than there is for high school, and, you know, just very different content, but still focusing on the ACT, you know, and I think like, especially even in light of, you know, what's been going on in schools and having this concern for recognizing that someone is struggling and making sure that, you know, we're trying to do something to help, you know, that's really what ACT is all about, because kids know about kids a lot faster than we as adults know, that there's a problem, and so the more that we can really encourage all of our students to, you know, go to the people that matter, to, you know, that are able to intervene and help, you know, the better off we're all going to be. You know, and then we also looked at a, a suicide severity rating scale, so that we can have a more consistent way of, if someone does either hint around about, you know, suicide or mention something that they're thinking about, having an ideology, that that's a, that's a rating scale that is available, and many Dane County districts are using that as a way to assess what is the risk here and, you know, what should our next study? Um, other things going on, on February 1st, Dr. Haraway came back to the district, you know, and it was mainly, it was a mixture of helping the teachers understand how to interpret the data that the kids took in the universal screener, and then also afterwards, he had a two-hour presentation where he shared strategies and interventions, and, um, the administrators were present, Jordan was present, you know, um, a lot of teachers, I said 35 staff members attended that night, you know, so that was, that was awesome, you know, that they would have had those two hours after school to just, you know, try to really learn from both his experience and his expertise. Um, we are planning another visit for Dr. Haraway in March, and so we're trying to take advantage of the fact that we got this, um, grant, you know, approved that Jordan applied for and got for us, and so it's like, so many times that we can bring him back before this year ends, we're going to try to take advantage of that and learn as much as we can from that. And on that same day, the Dane County Youth Assessment was given to middle and high school students, we don't have those results yet, but as soon as those are back, then I will share those with you at a later date, um, both our school district results, and then you can always compare it to county-wide results as well, you know, to see, you know, what are the things that maybe we've been looking at more closely. There you go, all yours, Chris.
All right. Um, Jan- late January and early February have been extremely busy, so I gave you a little bit longer narrative of your notes, I'm not going to hit on, I'm trying to give you the Cliff Notes versions of all of this here, uh, because there's been a lot going, going on, so I'm going to start with, um, academics and, and the building. Uh, ACT plus writing begins tomorrow, ACT marquee's is Wednesday, that's obviously a huge deal, so there's been a whole bunch of preparation, you get ready for that, uh, rooms are set up, tests are ready to go, uh, we encourage students, those juniors, to get a lot of rest tonight and, uh, have a good breakfast tomorrow, uh, we're, we're ready to go, so, uh, I was kind of expecting you to bug out with everybody else, but.
I wasn't.
As soon as this is done, you should go.
Civic duty, right now.
Exactly, uh, but I want to shout, uh, throw a big shout out to Tammy Schaefer, Kurt Long, Rich Meyer for their coordination and all this, and then we also have a few teachers as well, uh, who are proctoring as well, so, team effort on that one. Our school improvement planning team, uh, recently, uh, and specifically I want to point out Trevor Steiner, Mike Dolman, Don Schlick and Kopp and Akonbar, uh, put together live demonstrations of strategies to try to work on our CIP goal of improving content-specific vocabulary, which will eventually help us with reading comprehension, uh, the team had decided, looking at anything that we needed to bring people in, um, and had them actually participate in some of the activities, there was a lot of enthusiasm afterwards, people left saying, "Yep, I can try that, I can do it", it helped us seeing it, so, that was their decision, they put it together, they did a great job. Um, I had mentioned the Dane County Youth Assessment, but Vivian already mentioned it, so I will let that go. Melissa Schmidt's seventh-grade class has begun the hashtag Stand By You movement, uh, this is something they've been talking about for a while, and then, uh, there were some Super Bowl ads that came up as well, with the Stand By You, uh, concept as well, essentially what it is, is, this was a student-led movement that really, that she is facilitating, is to advocate for inclusion for all students, um, you know, that could get into bullying, it could get into a whole bunch of other issues that are out there as well, but essentially inclusion, how do we make everybody feel included in what they're doing? They've been creating banners, taking surveys, sharing, um, really how we're all alike, but also how we're different as well, um, more to come still on that. Uh, last time I was here, I believe I talked to you about the positive referrals that we were trying to work on from staff to students, and something I'm really excited about is, since that time, we have way more positive referrals coming in right now than negative referrals, and that perception, uh, for students is huge in terms of their, their achievement, if you work at some of the research by John Hattie, he will say, perception is one of the biggest factors in terms of, uh, of outcomes, I'm proud of that, but we also flipped it around, and we actually have students do the same for staff, and students started sending out all kinds of positive messages about staff, so it's been fun taking those to staff and saying, "Hey, here's one for you", um, and I know they enjoy it as well, so just really trying to pull up that positivity, what people are appreciating about each other. Uh, there is a, a program that I'm working on with Sarah Schatz right now, Sarah Schatz is our social worker from Joining Family Forces, um, there's a program through the county called Access to Opportunity Initiative, and what this is, is it's, it's funding that is available from the county level that could go to students who can't afford driver's ed, uh, or even the ability to take the test or even to drive to the test, um, this is a big issue, if you're coming from a family that can't afford it, and eventually. Um, there's a program through the county called Access to Opportunity Initiative. And what this is, is it's, it's funding that is available from the county level that could go to students who can't afford driver's ed, uh, or even the ability to take the test or even to drive to the test. This is a big issue, if you're coming from a family that can't afford it and eventually work is a big issue for you. Well, driver's license makes a big difference. Uh, we don't want to affect that in adult, we certainly don't want students to start off at that um, at that spot as well. We're looking right now at what those contracts could potentially look like. As of right now, with very minimal work, just a lot of paperwork, we could receive upwards of eight thousand dollars a year to offer up to students for driver's ed. So it's a wonderful initiative, still working on it right now. Uh, Deputy Scott Harram is new to the Dane County Sheriff's Department, he's in our area. Um, he's been spending a lot of time out here, he actually came out here one day. Uh, him and a partner, we actually walked the building, looked around. Just wanted to show them some different areas that are around here, get their perceptions on some things and their ideas. It was a great visit, uh, we gave them some extra work to do while they were here. This is also someone in response to some reviewing, we're doing our security cameras in the building. They need to be updated, we've been working on that since October. Uh, we wanted to put together a pretty comprehensive map of the entire building. What was old, what's not covered, what needs updating. We've got a couple of vendors in, uh, Scott Wisher is heading the head up, uh, to make sure that we're covering everything we need to. Uh, we've actually even looked at putting potentially a camera in here, so we can be able to do away with this little one and just happen to that at some point. Uh, we're also working with the Dane County Sheriff's Department, uh, potentially networking our feed to them. So if there ever was an issue, they could have eyes globally. Um, and that could potentially be, you know, three of our buildings. Uh, turning from academics and buildings to more activities. Uh, this actually goes back to quite a while now, but it did happen since last time. That was the Honors Choir traveled to Platteville High School. It was on a icy day, uh, but they made it out there, they did a great job. They worked with other honors bands and uh, or honors choirs. At the end of the day, they put together a concert that featured four songs that they collaborated worked on that day with the other choirs. It was really impressive to see them come together. They were exhausted, but they sounded amazing by the time it was done. Uh, the spring play rehearsals are underway right now, Louis Bradley is heading that up. He's doing a fantastic job with that, they actually have two different groups that are doing it. Uh, the performances are March sixteenth through the eighteenth, so be ready for that. The annual prom fashion show did not disappoint. I have to admit, it was my first time seeing it and it was quite the production. Um, it was a nice uh, mix of style, but also some personalities that got to come out. And some of the different uh, juniors were posing and getting quite creative in some of their poses. Uh, it was studied, it was very good. Uh, big thanks to Kim Hauser and Natalie Abel from the staff perspective and the work that they did. But we also had a lot of parents who were involved making that event, including the uh, the raffles that went with it. Go very well, it was, it was a great event. Uh, Gina Adomino and Anya LaHass, I've got to throw some kudos out to them. Uh, coordinating the middle school and high school mock solo and ensemble event. And then this past weekend was the Capitol Conference Solo and Ensemble Event, which was talked about uh, a bit before. To host a conference event is a huge undertaking and I always spent a ton of time uh, on it. And uh, you know, we had a few students who qualified for state on this as well, they're pretty excited talking about that today. So a great event, glad we could host it. Uh, we had a lot of people involved uh, in terms of staff and community, which is fantastic. Uh, to break up the winter a little bit, we recently had our mid-winter week. That included dress-up days, a trivia contest, uh, assembly, dodgeball, and dance. Uh, actually, you were one of our best dressed athletes. And you wore a tie kind of here to begin with and then it was undone a little bit and then by the end of the night it was wrapped around your head. It was, it was good. Actually, you were even leaving the uh, cog line at one point too. This is why he stayed. A lot of pictures of you on my social media, so uh, it was fantastic, no good one, good one. So, uh, a big thank you go to Kim Hauser, Megan Bills kemper, Mike Dolman, Kathy Hay, Kalpana Khanwar, Ellen Severson, our wonderful maintenance staff, Deputy Cartman was also there, and then all our staff and students for a wonderful week. It was a nice way to break it up. Uh, finally, the last thing that I wanted to just talk about, and this is really an offer up to all of you. Uh, following uh, my decision to step away, uh, even though I've got fresh eyes here, fresh perspective, uh, but I am stepping away, but you're heading into the future search, which you're going to really create your vision. Uh, so an offer that I would extend out to all, um, to really make sure that this future search goes well, uh, because you've got a great leader here and I want this to go very, very well for Jordan and the board here, uh, is anytime you'd like to come in, I'd love to give you a tour of the high school and the middle school. And really it'd be great if you could do it during the day, so you can actually see it in action. You can see how everything comes together. I'd love to give you just some insights, perspective, you can ask anything you want. In order to come up with a great future, I think you really need to know your present. And sometimes knowing your present can affect your future going forward, so. Uh, not required, but I'm extending that invitation, I've already had uh, one person uh, scheduled that's going to be coming in. I'm excited about that, so at any point that you'd like to, please let me know. Anytime we can get you all in the buildings, I think it's great anyway, so. At your leisure, feel free to do so. That would be it, thank you.
Cindy, just a couple of comments.
Absolutely.
I don't know if anybody else, but I'm picking up strawberries, Chris, on Wednesday. Kim, Kim is selling strawberries from Florida, I guess. I know they're not from Mason. And uh, I, I was also involved in the, uh, my wife and I were involved in the solo ensemble. And uh, when Anyella asked me to sign up, I said I'll do anything except class C violin solos. And so she put me as a door guard at, at, at the percussion ensemble and solos. And I'm thinking, this is going to be great. And one of the ones that touched me the most was an original arrangement by Cassidy DeWitt. Um, is she a sophomore or a junior?
Junior, too.
Yeah, uh, from Heights. She uh, arranged the song Enter Sandman by Metallica for like seven people, one drummer, couples marimbas, couples xylophones. And you want to talk about a moving experience. And I was on the outside. I couldn't imagine being on the inside, but uh, here, here are young, our young students. And I've got a star first, that's going to state. But to take the time to make the arrangement and then you have to have the arrangement approved. Uh, and uh, it's been done several times in Wisconsin Heights. And so just a big shout out to not only that group of musicians, but Steve and Lisa were working hard that day. How many steps?
Oh, I had eighteen thousand in three and a half hours.
And uh, and it was uh, the community support was evident that uh, there were so many community members. Twelve members of our community band who don't even have children in the, in the, in the school were able to help out, so.
We actually had community members just come and want to listen and they're like, well, where, where do I go? And I'm like, just pick a room. Very cool. There you go, anybody else have anything? Jordan, you have anything else for us?
Um, just real quick, um, a few meetings I just wanted to reference. Chris had mentioned the ACT before. We actually ran a meeting um, in here, Chris and Holly and Rich, um, just with our juniors a couple of weeks ago. Just kind of talking about the ACT and helping them understand, um, perhaps if they hadn't really fully considered the importance um, that that event has in their life and um, not to put pressure on them, but as I've described it to staff members before and as I've described it to kids, uh, but you love it or you don't. It does have life-altering consequences, um, depending how that goes. It can open doors or close doors and I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but that's reality. So it is very important, uh, we hope our students are as prepared as possible and we just wanted to kind of talk about a few things with them. And I enjoyed that, I don't get a ton of kid contact anymore than coming to sporting events, so. It's kind of nice to be a part of a meeting like that and talk about school with kids, so. Um, hopefully that all goes well. I know the staff's worked very hard on it, so I look forward to seeing that kind of come full circle in the next couple of days. Uh, hopefully we have perfect attendance and um, all of our kids will be here and we can get that taken care of and hopefully do well. As I told them and as I've always told kids, uh, whether you're, whether you're a thirty-five ability or a seventeen ability, all that matters is you try your best and put forth your best effort, whatever that equals for you, then you can be proud of that. Uh, we're not expecting everyone to get the same thing, just do your best. So hopefully that's what we'll get the next couple of days from our students.
Jordan, can I just add, every single junior is signed up for it and we've had no outcomes. So that obviously has implications for the district as well.
Absolutely. Which is a good thing, yes. You get dinged if you get below ninety-nine percent of participation. Promise you. So, uh, yeah, just wanted to talk about that. Another one that interesting, a gentleman from the River Valley Bank in Middleton, um, Evan Wing is the gentleman's name. He had called me back in like September and said, we have an event called the President's Breakfast and wondering if you could come to one of them. Sounds important though, I'll come. Um, I couldn't come until uh, the last couple of weeks. So uh, it's evident that gentleman, uh, Dionne Houghan, his son Casey Houghan was a good football player from Middleton. Played for the Badgers, small world, my brother was his coach at Madison, so. He walked in, he's like, you know Jeremy's son? I'm like, oh, that's my brother. He's like, oh, he coached my son. I was like, oh, okay. But anyways, really cool. So there was myself, I was like the oddball in this room. There was three um entrepreneurs there, um, who have all started businesses out there, um, in the area. So one guy uh, runs uh, they manufacture like soaps and deodorants and things. Um, he's a former teacher and actually he was doing experiments with his kids. Started with like Axe body spray because it's like the kids were spraying it all over each other all the time. So it started as, what's learned about the chemicals that are actually in Axe body spray? And because of what he did in the classroom in Belleville, he actually then became an entrepreneur. And as he built, um, works out of a mouthful. And I'm guessing based on what he talked about and then the quick Googling that I was doing as he was talking, uh, he will be a multi-multi-millionaire real soon. Uh, but just very interesting to hear people who have gone out on their own as entrepreneurs and started businesses. But then the cool part was talking about like marketing and messaging around what it is you're offering and how you could do that more effectively, in their case to sell a product, in our case to promote a school district. Um, so it was just a really cool opportunity that I was lucky enough to be a part of. Um, where there's, like I said, these three people that have started businesses now in the Madison area. So I was thankful that River Valley extended that invite, it was like I said, just need to hear their perspective and what they're doing. So interesting note, I can't help but share this fact. He talked about the perfume and like soap industry, he called it the wild, wild west in our country. Um, because the lobby is so big and so powerful that there have not been any regulations in that industry since nineteen thirty-eight.
Wow.
So in our country, there's about fifty banned chemicals for soaps and deodorants. In a year, it's two thousand. So before you put deodorant on, check the label. Um, but just interesting stuff to learn, uh, to hear about that. So little worldly knowledge for tonight. Um, Performance Services, if you remember, uh, Facility Study. We had kind of an initial check-in with them where we answered a few questions that they had from their initial um, walk-around and their architects' initial work and kind of ideas. So uh, we left that meeting with them, uh, expecting that by mid-March, we're going to kind of have the, the comprehensive, here's the information, um, so they have been in all the buildings, kind of checked things out. Really, to me, it's just to provide options and information to you guys about, if at some point you're interested, here are options and here's what those options look like, um, around facilities in the district. So I'm, I'm very interested to see that information, our preliminary meeting, um, I think to include in numbers in terms of financing with all just specs and things like that. So look forward to that information soon. In-service got mentioned briefly, um, that was another very good day. That was the same day as the um, Child Find Activities and the Child Development Fair. But we had in-service here with our professional staff and talked about things like essential standards. Um, it kind of foreshadowed some of the collaborative work we're going to try to do the next couple of years, um, as teams and things like that. So that was, I think, a good use of our professional learning time. And then food service staff, I've talked about that a little bit in the past. Cheryl and I joined Lisa Carrero from Topher, who's our region rep. We had a food service meeting, uh, Becky Rowling, who's our new director through Topher. Uh, it was her second day um, in district. And we had all of the food service staff members get together and just kind of talk about a fresh start, positive culture, uh, how we communicate with each other when we have concerns and how we work with each other. So I think that was a very positive meeting, in all seriousness, and I've heard good things. And I know Lisa was very appreciative of our support, um, to help her kind of articulate that message because it is a unique relationship with Topher and our staff. So, any questions and any ones I talked about or any other things on my, my list? It's amazing you can have that many views in ten days.
Those are the scheduled ones, not the poppers.
Cartman, right? Cartman?
Yeah.
Always?
An hour, an hour later. Good, all right. So committee reports, we have a few that we, um, so we met as policy, um, just before our board here and um, we talked about several different things. Um, obviously the first one was the um, early entrance um, in, into um, five K. And so um, we kind of wanted to bring it to the board to.
Four Ks.
I'm sorry, four Ks, giving my fours and fives and stuff, maybe I need to go back to four K. What, what does the board think about, I mean, right off the bat and kind of thinking about that? Um, you know, we heard what Natalie talked about and being able to allow a child to come in early. Is that something that we want to look at as a, you know, as a board to be able to provide that for the students? Um, what's your, what's your guys' thought? We did talk a little bit in committee, but I'm just kind of curious.
I just wanted to clarify, you said your daughter goes to the deadline by two days?
She's September third, yeah, so.
Two days.
As we talked about with James, just to give a little insight into the committee meeting, uh, as we talked about, I mean, the days then, well, on the surface, I mean, your case absolutely seems kind of like really two days. What we need to be careful on, if we choose to go this route, which we're not going to say what we should or shouldn't do, if we choose to go this route, though is, to me, it's less about the closeness of the days because no matter what the deadline is, there will always be a closeness of days. If it's a month, if it's six months, well, then you're going to be six months and two days. Um, so that's, that's the one piece. But I think around the possibility of doing this, and you referenced it yourself, what potential then criteria or what the process looks like, that's what we need to focus on is the process and kind of something similar to perhaps what we have for five K or for first grade. In that process, we feel comfortable with the process. Well, that's something I think we could all live with and endorse if philosophically. We know share the possibility of early entry into four K is something that we want to touch. She mentioned statute, there is no language regarding uh, early entry into four K. There is for five K, there is for first grade, um, and then as she said, it becomes a local decision. Do you want to get into that business or do you want to just say, we don't allow it? Policy has been that we don't allow it. So really that's where we're at, is do we want to consider making change to policy? And then if we do that, what are the procedures or the process we want to attach to that policy relative to early enrollment?
So if a, if a student is um, early enrolled in four K, if they came up with that kind of criteria, whatever, would they automatically be enrolled in kindergarten next year or would they have to go through the procedure to early enroll in kindergarten for next year? Or would this be automatic?
I wouldn't call it automatic. I would say that they would fall in line just like any other student in four K and so long as they were developmentally ready for kindergarten. Well, then it would have to be for them to be in kindergarten. I wouldn't call it automatic. And I wouldn't, I would not, this is just me talking here. I would not necessarily be a proponent that we're going to put them through another battery of tests the next year if they just experienced a year of four K and socially and academically adjusted to that. I wouldn't see that we would put them through that because it's a lot of time and, and money, quite frankly, from a district standpoint. So I don't know that we would.
And also the observations of the four K teacher who's observed that in one hundred eighty days or however many days. That would have so much greater impact on the decision, I would think, to, that if that teacher said, yes, they're ready to go. I, I believe that the um, the early entrance into five K is a, is a, is a well-researched policy. And if we wanted to follow that model. And if we wanted to follow that model, if, if there can be assessments that are, assessments that are valid, and I don't know anything about four K. So, but I would like to see it in the same processes as the five K.
So, it's something we should look at.
Yeah, and I think from my perspective, it's a benefit of a small school district, because you're not dealing with an incoming class of hundreds, and where we might be dealing with a lot of cases, you know, on a year-by-year basis. You take a look at maybe a handful at most, you know, of these cases, and that's just one benefit that we can offer people is, like you said, an opportunity to get some of the kids into a social setting that they may not have previously had. I think we can hold it, you know, to people, and a benefit of a small school district doing that. But this was, Jordan handed this out as far as early admission in kindergarten, and the focuses are mental maturity, language development, social, also emotional adaptive skills, and physical development and maturity, you know, so it's, I think that's what we talked about, is an all-accomplishing assessment of, based on the professionals that we have employed, you know, does it make sense?
And it might be something that we could incorporate into the Child Development Fair. You know, some place that we could, we have as, you know, a pretty well-standing date, so we can have that, and we can then plan for that coming year, like those addition of children as well.
So, would it be-
I'm getting lots of noms here.
Fair to say that we come back with draft procedure process? That is similar to what we have in place, what we utilize for the five K, bring that back?
That's what I'm getting here.
Okay. Will do.
All right.
Appreciate it. Just one more comment. I mean, that the Child Development Year, I mean, everything that's in that early motion procedures, it's almost like you want to dedicate your efforts, right, because like Jordan said, it is a financial responsibility to the district. And everything that's listed in here is what you guys are assessing them with your own district personnel. Wonderful. And I just would give you kudos for it, but as you're looking down, communication, growth motor, fine motor skills, problem solving, that's all been encompassed in this, this fair, and it just makes sense with, if we're in that direction, to utilize this data from that, too, as just maybe a cross-reference or something like that. So, appreciate you listening. Anything to add?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on from that one. I do have a few other updates from Policy Committee. So, one of the things that we talked about was student attendance. We talked a little bit about how it's communicated to parents, you know, how, what the process is, what it looks like for middle school, high school. We didn't have that perspective for elementary, but we did take it to information. That, we took it to the point that Jordan is now going to put it back on an admin meeting. They're going to be able to look at the letter, the content, the tone of the letter, and really determine what we want to get out of those letters being sent to parents. Because obviously, we truly want to improve attendance, but we also want to work collaboratively, collaboratively with our parents. So, kind of finding out what we can do in that aspect. And then, once they've got that, they'll bring it back to Policy Committee, and we'll kind of review from there. So, that's a work in progress. Facility uses, facility usage, lots to talk about that as well. Little bit more that, you know, it's a big topic, a little more than we could even talk about in our committee meeting. So, Jordan and Rich will be talking more offline about it, but really looking at how can we be transparent, showing the public what we have within our school district, as well as our community events that are scheduled, really trying to find that way to coordinate everything and making sure that everybody sees what's going on. Then, the last one, field trips. So, we do have some template ideas for ideas regarding genders and ratios. I don't know if you guys remember, last time I just brought up the question of, is there like a regulation, or was there anything that other people are doing regarding the trips, you know, as far as, you know, if there's one male, does, should there also be a female, or is there a ratio that should be done? So, our question to the board is, do you want us to pursue anything? There is some template ideas for genders and ratios. We want, we would want to keep it very broad, though, but, you know, because there are certainly people like Kim Hauser, who does a lot of overnight trips with her FFA OFIC officers. But then there's also the long overnight stays going into Spain. So, you know, there's a lot of gray area. But we, you know, is this something that you would like the Policy Committee to look into further?
I don't think so. I think, just if you're approving, or whoever's approving, use common sense.
If anybody would, if people were using, other than, I'm talking about-
Um, no, it was really come up when we were talking about the Spain trip, that, when he was talking about adding another male chapter.
So, yeah, to that point, I mean, the overnight trips are supposed to be approved. So, I mean, that would obviously be an opportunity, use the word, common sense. That would be the opportunity for the board to reject the common sense if it only did, did not meet those standards that you had. As we talked about with including something in policy, we talked about this last time, initially came up as certainly possible. We just would need to be very smart about how we craft it that, because if we're committing ourselves to something that's unsustainable, or we can't uphold, then that's a problem. So, if the direction from the board is to continue to try to exercise good judgment, and then obviously bring things to you as needed, well, then I think that's as good of an answer as I need, unless the board gives something more.
I think we're good?
Okay.
All right.
That sounds good.
All right. Moving on then to District Business, five point one. Do I have a motion to hire Melissa Schaffner as a part-time EA at Black Earth with a starting hourly wage of fourteen twenty-three? Thank you, James. Do I have a second?
Six.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions, comments? Mary Nun, Jim?
Yes.
James, Barb, Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah? Mary Beth, I'll say yes as well. Very sadly, do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Todd Stelzle, Technology Education Instructor, effective June sixth, two thousand eighteen, with thanks of service since nineteen ninety-three?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Gary.
Second.
Thank you, Isaiah.
I just want to say that this one is interesting, because my husband actually had him as a teacher until I, yeah, and then Kylie just had him this last year. So, it was really interesting to go back and go for conferences and have Bill go with and kind of see around. So, it was really neat. He's been a long time person, and it's very neat.
Can I just make one comment? Yes. So, a couple of the kids that work for me, Chris, before the school year is out, they would like to hear Mr. Stelzle on the morning announcements. Okay, do one of his famous Vanguard things. So, if there's someone you can make that happen, they would love it.
Glad to make that happen. Could probably make them happen every day for the rest of the year. Here's the list.
Anything else?
These are days as administrators and as board members, you know are going to come. I mean, it just, clock doesn't stop for anyone. It doesn't make it any easier, though.
All right. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
No.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I will say a sad yes. And another very sad one, do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Dave Purdy, math teacher, effective June tenth, two thousand eighteen, with thanks of service since nineteen ninety-seven?
So, would-
Isaiah, Mary Beth?
It's too dumb.
Yeah, another hard one.
It's making a resounding call.
Bit of my comments.
Yeah, absolutely. Very neat, so.
Yeah, just, these two jobs aren't very refined either.
Thanks for retiring the same here.
Oh, my gosh. Two very difficult positions to find.
As Chris and I talked about, you have that process of calling the people that you do have a couple of candidates. The process of calling the people and kind of recruiting, and quite frankly, they'll start tomorrow, once this becomes official, because they are hard to fill. My bigger concern, and I would say at this point, is we can hire, but September first is still a long ways away in the world we live in now. In these positions, some people will go through two or three contracts before the school year starts.
Hopefully, it will be the last, it'll end with.
I hope, and that's, yeah, that's just the reality right now. So, hopefully we can get people in, and then hold on till the health school year starts.
Very good. All right, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
No.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I will say yes as well. All right, five point four, do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Kira Nelson, assistant high school volleyball coach, with thanks of service since two thousand seventeen?
So, sorry.
Thanks, Jim and Gary. Any questions? Thank you, Kira. Anything else? Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Do I have a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen-nineteen CISA five service contract?
Second.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions, comments? Mary Nun, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. All right, Board or Committee Meetings, do we, we do have a curriculum set up for March twelfth, Employee Relations for March twenty-second. Anything else at this time?
I think we should schedule a policy, probably. I think that'd be good. Maybe not on a board night, just because it seems like there is a lot of- Yeah, there's a lot of-
Yeah. Well, let's talk about that offline, and we'll get a date then scheduled. Anything else?
So, the Employer Relations Committee, that was follow-up to the last time when the board had talked about trying to schedule the opportunities to meet and confer with different groups. So, that's the date that we, Penny and I have looked at the calendar. That's the date we have set for custodial EAs and support staffs, is the twenty-first.
All righty, do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, parentheses one, parentheses C.C., for the consideration of employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. When executive session ends, the school board meeting is adjourned. James and Isaiah, any questions? Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for staying, man. Yeah, but now get home quick. Trying to keep it from meeting nights. That'll be good, too much trouble.
Oh, very.